Good evening, welcome. We will open the annual town meeting. Can you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under our and equal liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being both video, audio tape, and streaming live this evening. So, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed directly, directed to notify the inhabitants of the town of Warren qualified to vote in the elections in the town affairs to meet at the Quabog Regional Middle High School, 284 Old Westbrook Field Road, Warren on Thursday, June 13th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Then and thereto act on the following articles. I've been informed by the town clerk that we have met the core requirements to conduct the town's business and that the warrant has been duly posted. So with that being said, before we get started, I have a few announcements. I would like to see if I have unanimous consent to recognize the police chief, Mr. Jerry Mallett, our town administrator, Mr. James Ferrera, and town council, Mr. Jeffrey Blake. If it's unanimous consent to allow them to speak during the meeting if they're called upon to do so. Does anybody object to this? Seeing none, it's unanimous, they will be able to. Great. Before we get started, the town administrator has asked me if he could take the podium. He has some announcements he'd like to make and talk to you about some things going on in the town. I'll turn it over to Mr. Ferrera.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody, members of Warren and West Warren residents, members of the Board of Selectmen. It's an honor and a privilege to be here this evening to discuss the FY25 budget. The FY25 budget took place in preparation over the last six months. There is a handout that is accompanied with the omnibus budget and the articles as you walk in that goes, that will walk you through all of the highlights of the FY25 budget process and some of the statistics and some of the key points to the budget. I do want to stress some of the points here this evening that I think is critically important, and I want to thank all of the staff and the department heads who worked very hard on this process. Like again, I said it's a six-month process. I'd like to thank all of them for all of their hard work and their dedication, and our boards and commissions, our finance committee, our reestablished capital planning committee. Very important, we all worked together to bring this document to you, the residents, for consideration. So thank you very much for all your hard work and dedication. The Board of Selectmen and myself gave a directive to all departments. The directive was a level services budget. Any increases needed to be justified, need to be talked about, debated, looked at. We had a very transparent and open process. We had several budget meetings with the selectmen, with the FinCom, with capital planning. We all looked at this with a very, very close eye. The FY25 budget as presented reflects to you a 2.82% budget increase from fiscal year 24 to 25. As presented right now to you, sitting right in front of you, before any articles are debated and voted on, is a 2.82% increase from last year. Now typically municipal budgets range anywhere from conservatively 2.5% to 3% increase year after year. I think a 2.82% is a good, good municipal budget. If all raised and appropriate items are approved at the town meeting this evening, this budget would grow to 3.9%. Still within an acceptable range, but it is up for consideration. The House Ways and Means Committee recently released their budget and the unrestricted general aid fund number for the town of Warren was $1,092,412. So we're only going to be potentially seeing about a $10,000 increase from fiscal year 24. Not much when costs continue to climb on reoccurring costs. Property taxes are the largest revenue source of the town, comprising about 70% of the FY25 general fund revenue. So 75, so 70% of how we fund our budget are from the collections of taxes, both real estate and personal property. Personal property taxes comprises of about 10% in tax collections. So a total of 80%, between 70% in real estate and 10% in personal property is a total of 80% in, 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 in property taxes. As of June 10th, the town has collected $1,991,727 in personal property tax for fiscal year 24 as compared to $846,082 in fiscal year 23. As of June 10th, 2024, the town has collected $7,429,773, $773 in real estate taxes for fiscal year 24. Real estate and personal property tax collections total about 80% of the FY25 budget revenue. And this is, our collection rate is about 95% in this category. State aid. Unrestricted general government state aid is the second largest revenue source for the town, comprising about 10% of the omnibus budget revenue. So that million dollars or $1.1 million that we get from the, from the state significantly helps fund our budget as the second largest revenue source within our budget. So any reductions in state aid would trigger a reductions in services for town. Local receipts comprise of about 10% of the omnibus revenue. As of June 10th, 2024, the town has collected $489,863.85 in motor vehicle excise tax, which is the largest source of local receipts of about 5% in other collection revenues. Reserves. I'm pleased to announce and to proclaim the town has very strong financial reserves. The fiscal year 24 free cash was certified as of, as of July 1st, 2023 at a very strong level of $1,580,795. Prior fiscal year free cash was certified at $1.1 million. Currently, the town has over $2 million in stabilization and a little over $600,000 in capital stabilization. This is the highest reserves in town history. The FY25 budget uses zero reserves to balance their budget. That's zero reserves to balance your budget. Many towns and cities across the Commonwealth get into trouble with using these one-time reserves to fund ongoing expenses. We don't do that in the town of Warren, and that's very something, that's something to be proud of. Currently, the town enjoys a very strong financial position. However, the town is not immune to any future financial challenges that may, that many small communities and especially rural communities face in the Commonwealth. So we have to be vigilant. We're not, we can't always hope that we're going to be okay. We have to continue to plan. And some of the challenges that we face in the future are increasing of wages, utility costs, insurances on both the health side and the, and the general liability side. Those costs continue to climb. So we have to plan for a rainy day, and we are. I just want to also kind of go over some of the highlights of this past fiscal year and some of the projects that we have worked on as a community that were important to the community. Obviously staffing is, is, is an important part of the community. And what I mean by that is to make sure that services are provided to the residents. So I'm pleased to announce that the police department is fully staffed, the fire department's fully staffed, the sewer department is fully staffed, building and planning is fully staffed. There are some challenges in some other offices that we're currently addressing, and we're going to address them as quickly as possible and as, as, as expeditiously as possible. We feel that public safety is the number one priority here in the town of Warren, because if we're not safe, what else matters? We are currently on our final stages of our financial feasibility study for a public safety slash municipal complex. That study was funded through a state grant that I, that I was able to obtain through the state. That study should be released and completed sometime this summer. So please stay tuned on some details and some exciting announcements and some exciting dates for that. The senior center, I'm pleased to report the senior center had a little bit of a makeover. The exterior of the building had a little bit of a makeover and, and some refurbishing done. As you may well know, that the senior center had some peeling paint and had some issues with its exterior. Some of the drainage over there, the, the, some of the siding and some of the, some of the gutters were, were not functional. So we took care of that. We invested about a little over $40,000 in improvements to the senior center as a whole, whether it be repair of the roof or the exterior or some electrical issues, some emergency lighting issues, and we're still not done. We're, I'm aggressively going after grants from the green communities to address a weatherization project, to do the entire envelope of the building, to look at a, putting in a new HVAC unit with heat pumps. And also, we're working with our, our partners in the State House, Representative Smola and Senator Olivera to get a earmark for a, a new roof that is needed down at the senior center. We also, I'm pleased to report that we have, because of the support of the Board of Selectmen, we were able to do staff trainings because we feel as though that staff trainings are very important for all our staff. We had, we recently had a staff training a few months ago on customer service. The town meeting had appropriated money for that, but we were able to make sure, we were able to secure free training for that. So that's actually going to be rolled back to the townspeople, that $3,000. And hopefully, we could maybe reprogram that at the fall for other training initiatives for the town, for our staff. So, but we were able to do some staff training. That's very important. Our capital planning committee, as I mentioned before, is reestablished. That's critical. We have a functioning capital planning committee. We have a capital budget that was recently passed and the copies of that is available outside. If you haven't picked one up, they're also on the website as well. I also want to, to mention that we're working very diligently with our sewer commissioners to address capital needs at the sewer department that haven't been addressed for years. I'd also want to, to bring to the attention for, for everybody here that our, we were able to secure a state grant for $65,000 to implement financial management software for all our financial departments here in town. And that software called Vadar will be able to coordinate and, and talk with our financial departments. That was implemented through a state grant that I received for $65,000 this past July. Full implementation was this year. And I want to thank the entire finance department for jumping right in and, and learning a whole new, new program very quickly. And that will definitely help the town in, in all its future financial endeavors. So I'll, any questions that anybody may have, I'd be happy to answer them about the budget or about any of the accomplishments or any concerns that you may have. I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, seeing as there's none, I don't want to take up too much more of your time, but I do have one final thing that I would like to present this evening that I'm probably going to get yelled at for doing, but I want to do it anyways because I think it's very important. As I mentioned to everybody just recently, we recently received a new financial software system. And almost at about the same time that we got a new financial software system, our current, our, our town accountant at the time had gone on to another position in another neighboring community. And at that time, we were at a loss. So we had a new financial software system that not everybody understood and no town accountant. So with, with much ado and with much negotiations, I was able to, to convince and to beg Madeline Wutowski for coming and, and participating and helping us so much in a very tough situation. So this year, I'd like to give out an MVP award to a, an employee, most valuable player award, who really dedicated, stepped up and, and really pitched in when there was a lot of unknowns. And I can't thank her enough for all the hard work that she has done. And so I have this plaque here that we were able to get. So Madeline, would you please come on up? Sorry for taking up too much of your time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ferrer, our town administrator, for those updates on the town and, and budget updates. And congratulations to Madeline. And Madeline's a team player. And I saw her earlier tonight. She's like, yeah, I came back and I'm done now. But we appreciate your help and all your efforts. And it probably wasn't easy, I have to admit. I deal with some financial software, so I'm not talking about easy or anything like that, but you know. I know, but thank you very much for that. So again, thank you, Mr. Ferrer. And we will now begin with the annual town meeting. Just a few announcements. Everybody should have registered to vote. Everyone should have their clicker. I know I said this at the special, but there's some new people here. When we get ready to vote, we'll have a motion and a second. If there's no debate or discussion, we'll call for a vote. I will ask the town clerk to open the vote. You'll have roughly 15 seconds to cast your vote. You can push this clicker as many times as you want. It's only going to register the last vote before we close the vote. So it doesn't matter how many times you're able to change your vote, not after I say, "Close the vote, please." So roughly about 15 seconds. Just checking some things. Done the pledge and just making sure I got all my things due, threw me off tonight. Some of the basic procedures again. It's, motions should be read here at the center. Once, seconded, and if there's any discussion or debate, I would appreciate if you could come to the center and speak to the microphone for the elderly and the handicapped. If you can't make it to the center, if you could just stand, speak for me, chair, that's fine. If residents can't hear the question or what's been asked of a board member or a town employee, I will gladly repeat that. Same thing goes for me. If you can't hear me, ask me to speak up. If I'm speaking too fast, ask me to slow down. Whatever you need from me, I will do my best to recognize everybody tonight. All registered voters should be in the center. Non-registered voters should be on the outside. We've recognized the three officials that we need to allow them to speak this evening. But if somebody else was a non-registered voter, maybe the superintendent from Pathfinder or something, well, actually, we don't have to recognize you. You're, you're good. Anybody else, we will recognize them at that point. Is there any questions with regards to anything we've gone over, said? Everybody good to go? We'll start with Article One. No questions, seeing none. Alrighty, I will await a motion on Article One.
Mr. Moderator. I move at the town vote to accept the reports of the town officers and all standing and special committees as printed in the 2023 annual report.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding this article? Seeing none. Call for vote. Can you open the vote, please? Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. I will await a motion on Article Two, please.
Mr. Moderator. I move at the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint all necessary town officers not to previous, not previously chosen by ballot.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding this article? Seeing none? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion passes. I'll wait, a motion on Article Three, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to add a new full-time firefighter EMT position and to raise an appropriate $46,813 for the compensation for FY2025.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding this motion? This article? Seeing none? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yes.
First off, Mr. Ferrer, I really appreciate your report. It was really good. And all due respect to the fire department. My question is, Mr. Ferrer told us that he was quite pleased to announce that we're fully staffed in our fire department and our police department. So I guess that's why I'm standing, because my question is, if we're fully staffed, why do we need not to just stay that way this year and face this next year? Give the people in town a little bit of a break financially? That's my question.
Thank you. Chief?
I think there may have been a little misunderstanding there. When, when the town administrator said fully staffed, he meant there's no current full-time openings on either department. Not that we're at sufficient staff. There's just currently no one that is, that, we haven't lost anybody recently that's gone to another town that we're looking to fill a position that's currently available on the department. I don't want to speak for the town administrator, but I'm assuming that's what he meant.
That is correct.
Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, Anne Bandva. When I look at this, it says that you also want an increase for, it must be overtime for firefighters and EMTs. And you're asking for an increase. Would that alleviate some of that if you've got another full-time position?
The increase would, again, help with overtime costs for vacations and whatnot, and it would have to account for the holidays that were, would be in for, to cover overtime for that full-time position. That's why there's an increase there.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
John Nason, Warren. I just want to know what we have for current firefighters on staff right now? And what's the expectation of the fire department to be fully staffed? Fully staffed?
So I don't think it's a secret across the country that public safety has had issues with staffing. It's not just here in Warren, it's, it's everywhere. Trying to fill full-time positions, trying to fill call positions, on-call positions has extremely challenged. The fact of the matter is, we've lost about a third of EMS providers across the country since COVID started about four years ago. That's been a tremendous hit to everyone. We feel it here in Warren, just like every other community feels it. Unfortunately, our on-call staff, especially for EMS, are not able to do the hours that they once were able to do, meaning that they're not able to commit to weekends at eight hours a shift for, you know, for on-call pay of about $5 an hour. And if they get paid, you know, go out on a call, it's $50 for that call. They work full-time jobs. They're not as willing or able to do that, working multiple jobs. So we've kind of collectively hit that wall where, where we need to prepare. And the only way to backfill that is with some more full-time staff. Eventually, we're trying to work our way towards 24-hour coverage with a couple of firefighters in-house. That is not something I'm here to, tonight to, to do. We're trying to do this one phase and one step at a time. But this additional position would allow us to continue to help, especially on the weekends, to staff. We have to have two EMTs to get that truck out the door every single time. We cannot staff with one. You can't run an ambulance with one person. So, you know, while we appreciate everything our call staff does and that all, all, our call staff is 85% of this department. That's what they make up, a huge, huge, the majority of our department. Okay? We can't do that without them. This is a, a work in, you know, teamwork between full-time and call staff. Every one of them are cross-trained to work on either the fire apparatus or the, or the ambulance here. We do the best with what we absolutely, what we have. But unfortunately, times have changed and that availability and the amount of EMTs that we have just isn't where it once was. So, you know, that, I, I foresee at some point that, you know, year, a couple of years down the road, I'm intending on applying for grants to help with that staffing. There's our grants out there for that. But, you know, eventually, I would like to see the department, you know, staffing a couple of members around the clock so we can get out the door. Right now, we currently staff seven to 11. We do not staff overnight. There's people on, but they're coming from home. Okay? So there's going to be a delay in service. So the reality is, is this was one step closer to getting to that, to enough staff to be able to get the truck out the door within just a couple of minutes of that 911 call and get to people's residence. Did that answer your question? Oh, I'm sorry. I, my, my apologies, Mr. Nason. So current staffing is, we have about 30 people on the department. We have five full-time firefighter EMTs and myself as a full-time fire chief. So we have six full-time that are on the department. This would bring us to six full-time firefighter EMTs. It would help our shifts a little bit better and even off the weekends a little bit more for us. You know, and, and, you know, because that day is going to come where I'm going to lose a couple of call members that do a lot of hours due to work and, and, and other personal commitments that they just aren't going to be able to do those hours. So we're trying to prepare for that. So we have about 30 people on staff total, about 25 call firefighters, and we have five full-time firefighters. Sorry about that, Mark. The expectations is to, you know, continue to have a combination, what we refer to as a combination department, which is made up of full-time and on-call members. You know, we're always going to rely on our call members. They're going to be always the majority of our department. That's the reality of it. This is a small town. We do the best of, with, with what we can. We're, you know, right now, we're very fortunate that we have the program here at the school because that is helping to supplement our numbers. We have new members coming in. But, you know, it, the days of having 17 roster slots at each station is just not there. We just don't have the, the volunteerism that they once did. And again, that's not here in Warren, it's, it's everywhere. So we're trying to do our best with, with, you know, using a combination of staff on all fronts.
Thank you, chief. Anyone else? Seeing none. Move for a vote. Any more? Can you open the vote, please? Five seconds. Close the vote. The motion passes. I will await a motion on Article Four. Please, pardon. Chief?
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to add a full-time police officer position and raise and incorporate $59,724 as compensation for FY25.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
So just to let the town know why I'm asking this for this, Police Reform has decimated police. When Mr. Nathan was on the board, we had already started talking about what we were going to do when part-time is left. There is no part-time academy anymore. We only have one part-timer left. I used to have fifteen officers to fill shifts, fill details. I'm down to eight. If we lose somebody, and in the past, we had a part-timer, that part-timer could work until I got him into an academy. And they went to the academy, and they came out. They go right on the road. They are already trained. I don't have that anymore. If I don't have anyone that is academy-trained, I am going to have to find, go out, find somebody, then try and find an academy to get them into. Put them into the academy, which is six months long. Then when they get out, I have to train them for twelve weeks, at least. That's a year to a year and a half process now. With the current staffing level, with the eight full-timers, that'd be extremely taxing on us. With this one more position, that would help us out with that. And if we were to lose someone and go through that, we'd be able to tread wire until we get that person out.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody have a question? Comment, concern, debate? Seeing none. Okay. We're going to open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. I will await a motion on Article Five, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to create the position of alternate building inspector in the absence of the primary building inspector and to raise the appropriate one thousand dollars for compensations for fiscal year 2025.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
I'm just wondering why, Rich Demetrius, I'm just wondering why we have to create the position. It already exists. I was the alternate building inspector at one point.
Is there anybody from the building department here? Mr. Farrar, can you answer that? Will I matter?
If this position was, had to have been a long time ago, because since I came in two thousand and two, this position was never funded at all. So if there was one before, I don't, I'm not aware of it. But since it's not in the omnibus budget, there's never been any money, then we have to create the position.
We just didn't have any, find any records of that going back. So we weren't sure if there was one, if there isn't one, but the position should be filled just in case our current building commissioner is unavailable.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Are you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. Article Six. I await a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to reestablish the position of alternate animal control officer in the absence of the primary animal control officer and to raise and appropriate a thousand dollars for compensation for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Beverly Saltis Warren, I just have a question. Who fills in now when you're absent?
Um, so that's the issue. There is nobody. For the most part, I'm generally available, and I can handle a lot of things on my work cellphone, which I carry on me 24/7. But I don't have any hours. It's basically as needed. And so there are times where, you know, I will go out of town, to an amusement park with my kids, or, you know, just be unavailable for a certain period of time. And sometimes the police officers will help with certain situations when they can, but they're not always able to do that if it's a busy day for them. So also, I will be, if this does pass, I will be lowering my expense budget down to a thousand dollars less to compensate for this additional a thousand dollars. I want to stay within my budget. I don't want to increase my budget in any way, shape, or form. So this was the only way to get that back up for the town, was to present it as an article.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Are you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. Article Seven. I await a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to create a new part-time position of Parks and Recreation Administrative Assistant slash Recreation Coordinator under grade A1 on the town's wage compensation scale and to raise and appropriate fourteen thousand three hundred and six dollars for compensation for the FY 2025 year as described in Attachment A.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Is there any discussion, ladies and gentlemen? Thank you.
Yes, Beverly Saltis Warren. Grade A1. Would that be twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents an hour? And how many hours? Is it twelve hours?
So currently, we have no staff. The activities and programs that happen now in town are by your three park commissioners that just passed. We are looking for a twelve, what would average to a twelve-hour per week position to be able to help our, the park commissioners do things like take notes at our meetings, do the daily, daily things that we need to do, answer phones, respond, correspondence, as well as help us to run recreational programs. I don't have the scale in front of me.
All right. My other question is, I read the job description, and, I mean, it's pretty lengthy, and this person should have a bachelor's degree, and it almost sounds like she's going to be in charge of the department. My second question is, what new activities will you be adding this year, you know, to make it worth the fourteen thousand?
First of all, you guys are getting a really good deal in the three park commissioners you have. We put in, I put in a loan at least three hundred hours per year. I've kept track. Our other commissioners at least are up in the two, high two hundreds. We, I have calculated that you're paying about less than five dollars an hour for our time. So the things we do are very much, a lot that we're volunteering our time. So some of the, thank you. Some of the activities that we run currently, I'd like to be able to go on vacation and not be from afar dealing with things that are happening here. And that happens all the time. We would like to offer more programs. We're happy to, to look at almost anything, but this year, we've offered, we did, have offered new things this year with us doing it. We held hip-hop class. We organized pizza camp. There's been many things, and we would love to just keep offering more and more, but we are at capacity. I am, as well as some of my other commissioners, are getting up there in age, and we are not going to be here forever. If we don't build capacity within the town, it could go down to zero. And that's what it was when I started as a park commissioner, and it would break my heart to see that the town have nothing, just because your commissioners decide to not run.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Farrar, could you comment with regards to hourly wage?
Yes. So to answer the previous question, under a grade A1 category for fiscal year twenty-five, the minimum hourly wage would be twenty-two seventy-five an hour.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Are you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. The motion carries. I await a motion on Article Eight, please. Eight-One.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to raise and appropriate three million two hundred and nine, two hundred and thirty thousand to fix the salary and compensation of all elective officers of the town as provided by General Law, Chapter Forty-One, Section One-O-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, and to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds such sums as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the town for the ensuing year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-four.
I await, no. No, I'm going to take it from there. Okay. So I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ladies and gentlemen, this is when a moderator takes over, and you're going to follow along through your books. So with Eight-One, we're going to have, I'm going to go through each department's budget. I'm going to announce what it is. I'm going to announce the total of the budget. If there is something that you wish to discuss within that department at that time, I need you to respond with a hold. Whoever calls out for a hold, I'll ask you what you would like to hold. I'll put a mark next to it. We're going to move on through the other budgets until we get to the end of Eight-One, and then we'll come back and address the holds, and then we will vote on the Article Eight-One. That was motion and a second. Everybody clear on that? Yes? Any questions? No? All right. So, to start, Selectmen A, which is from the moderator, down to Regional Dispatch, is a total of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Good on that? Okay. Benefits, which would be County Retirement Assessment to Unemployment Insurance, one million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. Good? Okay. Debt, which is debt, uh, debt, retirement, down to principal short-term debt. And I apologize because the lighting is horrible, Mr. Duff and School Committee. I'll bring it in light next year. One hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Okay? Selectmen B, which is Selectmen Town Administrator Assistant to Selectmen Town Administrator Assistant Expense, fifty-seven thousand, twenty-two dollars. Okay? Selectmen C, which is Town Administrator Salary to Town Administrator Expense, one hundred thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Selectmen D, Law Department Expense through Insurance Workman's Comp, two million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. Okay? I'm sorry. Did I hear a hold? Hold? Which item am I? I'm sorry? Did you hear that? Law, first one? Okay. We will come back to that. Finance Committee, Reserve Account through Finance Committee Expense, forty-two thousand dollars. Accountant, Accountant Salary through Actual Service, Actual Services, one hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Assessors, Assessor Salary through Appraisal Services, Service, one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Treasurer, Treasurer's Salary through Bank Charges, Services and Service Charges, ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Tax Collector, Tax Collector's Salary through Collector Tax-Taking Expense, eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. Town Clerk, Town Clerk's Salary slash RIO to Presidential Elections, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Planning Board, Planning Board's Clerical Salary through Planning Board Expense, twenty-four thousand, fifty-three dollars. Conservation, I'm sorry. So you want a hold? On which one? Okay. Hold that. Conservation Commission, Conservation Commission Clerical Salary, Conservation Commission Expense, sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Okay? Building Inspector, Building Inspector's Salary to Building Inspector's Expense, thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. Forestry, Forestry's Salary through Pesticides, seventeen thousand dollars. And then Veterans Agent, Veterans Agent's Salary through Veterans Benefits, ninety-five thousand, four hundred. Okay, that will conclude that section. We're going to go back to the holds now and address those. The first hold we had was Selectmen D, Law Department Expense. Ma'am?
Beverly Saltis Warren, that was a thirty-three point three percent increase from last fiscal year. I mean, is there something coming up in fiscal year twenty-five? Any lawsuits or that we have to increase it?
Lieutenant?
Thank you. So in fiscal year twenty-four, that was under-budgeted. So in fiscal year twenty-five, we feel as though that that is a, a correct budgetary number.
Yes, sir.
Was it under-budgeted or over-used?
So the question was, was it under-budgeted or over-used?
Well, both. It was, it was under-budgeted, and there is pending lawsuits against the town for some planning matters that we're currently in litigation with, and we're very close to settling on those matters. Not that I'm worried.
Anyone else? The question I was just asked? He had, well, his, his third part of the question, I think, was, are there more lawsuits coming, correct, sir? And the response was, not that we're aware of. Okay. No problem. Anyone else? No. So I want a motion to approve that one again? Well, I can't finish this one off first. I'm just asking a question, since the hold has been resolved. Okay. The mind hasn't changed. You're right. Okay. Planning Board, nothing has changed. You're right. So this is in regards to, sorry, hold on a second. This is in regards to planning the salary for the clerical, which you're questioning a seven-thousand-dollar increase.
That is not a raise. That's to, that's to budget for additional hours. The person who was hired for, to do additional hours if needed. Currently, the hours are not needed, but if they are needed, it is budgeted for.
Thank you. Anything else regarding staff? No change to that? So you do that to the total? So prior to voting on this, folks, because those are the two holds that we had, just to, to reiterate that this is raise and appropriate, stay on this budget, goes towards taxation. So we have no other holds. I'm going to read the total amount for that portion of Eight-One, and then I'll ask for Lori to open up the vote, and we'll vote the amount itself, this portion. So the total amount for Eight Point One, for Total General Government A, is three million, two hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. No other questions before we go to vote. Seeing none. Are you ready, Lori? Okay. We're going to open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion passes. Motion passes. Holloway, a motion on Article eight dash two, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate three million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, ninety-nine dollars to fix the salary and compensation of all elective officers of the town as provided by General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, and to raise and appropriate, as may be necessary, to defray the expenses of the town for the ensuing year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second, and again, ladies and gentlemen, I will read the department totals. As I get to a total, I read the department, the amount, if there's something you would like held, please respond with a hold. Let me know what line item that you would like held, and we'll come back and address it and then take a vote on this section. To begin, Animal Control, Animal Control Officer Salary to Animal Control Expense, fifteen thousand, five hundred? Sorry, hold? On which part, ma'am? Okay. Police Department, Police Chief Salary to Police Rental Lease, one million, thirty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. Okay? Fire Department, Fire Chief EMT Salary through Emergency Management Expense, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. Highway Department, Highway Surveyor Salary through Highway Grounds Maintenance Park slash Cemetery, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred dollars. Cemetery Commissioners, Cemetery Clerk Stipend through Cemetery Supplies, six thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Board of Health, Board of Health Salaries through Landfill, Remove Vegetation and Stabilize Banking, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Council on Aging, Council on Aging Salary Director through Tri-Valley Services, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. Libraries, Warren Library through West Warren Library, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. Parks and Recreation, Parks Commissioner Salaries through Summer Recreation Expense, sixty-one thousand, ninety-five dollars. Nothing, okay, so we have one hold. Back on Animal Control. We have one hold on Animal Control Expense, miss? Do you want to speak to that, or ask, tell me what's going on?
I'd like to lower the expense account by one thousand to accommodate the alternate animal control position.
So currently, right now, it's at five thousand, five hundred? You want to lower that?
Yes.
To what?
If it's at fifty-five hundred, then forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred? No, the expense line?
For the expense.
The total, yes. So it's a decrease of a thousand dollars on that line item. Any questions? I'm sorry? Holloway, a motion in the second, so there's been a, a motion to lower the expense line from five thou... Let me make sure I got this right, fifty-five hundred to forty-five hundred, correct? Do I have a second? There's been a motion in the second, is there any discussion? She's pretty much answered the question as to why, is there any other discussion with regards to lowering that by a thousand dollars?
I would like to thank our Animal Control Officer for her integrity and not trying to take advantage of the townspeople. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No. So, I'm sorry, do you have to, are you going to vote that one line, or can I just add, deduct a thousand from the total? Vote this motion to reduce that one line. So we have a motion in the second on the floor to reduce that expense line by a thousand. With no other discussion, we're going to take a vote on that. I'm going to do a voice. We're going to do a voice vote on this one, folks, we're not, can you use the clickers, okay? So all those in favor of reducing the expense line by the thousand dollars to forty-five hundred, signify by saying aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Now we have to lower that by a thousand. We're right, eighty, three million, two hundred and eighty thousand, right? That's what I have. It's just a thousand, I can do that math. So the main motion now for all the departments we went through, for Motion eight dash two, with the reduction of a thousand dollars, we're now voting to approve this amount, three million, two hundred and eighty thousand, ninety-nine dollars. Is that correct, finance? I read it correctly? So that is the amount that you have before you, we have a motion in the second on the floor for this. I'm sorry? Yes, we do. Is there any discussion regarding that? No? You ready, Lori? You're good? Eight dash two, yes. Okay, with the thousand dollar reduction? Okay, we're set to vote, we're going to open the vote, please. Five seconds? Close the vote, please. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. I will wait a motion on eight dash three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate sixty thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars for the assessment, for the vocational, educational tuition and transportation for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second, is there any discussion regarding this motion? No discussion? Seeing none? Set the vote, Lori? Eight dash three. Yes? Open the vote, please. Five seconds? Close the vote, please. The motion carries, thank you. Holloway, a motion on eight dash, Article eight dash four, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate four hundred eighty-seven thousand and forty-four dollars for the assessment for the Pathfinder Regional Technical Vocational School for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion has been made in the second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Lori, who said? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I know the superintendent is here, and I wonder if he can be asked to answer the question. How many students from Warren attend Pathfinder Regional for that assessment?
So we do have Mr. Duda, the superintendent from Pathfinder, here, and he is able to speak to you on behalf of that question. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. The total is forty-five from Warren attending Pathfinder Regional, the total, total amount of students in the district right now, six hundred and forty-three as of October one, twenty twenty-three. Forty-five currently from Warren.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, folks? There is, ma'am, this is small. We see none others, okay, we're going to move to a vote, are you ready? This is eight dash four. Ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds? Close the vote, please. Motion carries. I will wait a motion on Article eight dash five, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the following sums for the FY twenty twenty-five Quabog Regional School District.
It's your reading, sir, it's your motion.
All right, debt exclusion, WCES to debt exclusions, Quabog Regional Middle High School, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Minimum local contribution, two million, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. Above minimum contribution, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Transportation, six hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars, for a total district assessment of four million, five hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And further, that this appropriation shall be reduced by Warren's pro-rata share of any state aid for regional school transportation allocated to the district in excess of six hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion in the second, is there any discussion regarding this article? Seeing none? Lori, who said? Yes? Open the vote, please. Five seconds? Close the vote. Motion carries. Article nine, Holloway, a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article nine, as printed into the warrant, and that the sum of six hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and three cents to be raised as follows, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and three cents from the sewer receipt account, and ninety thousand from the sewer retain earnings account. Total O and M, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and three cents. Estimated indirect cost calculation, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seventy-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Total need to raise, nine hundred and three dol..., nine hundred and three thousand, fifty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Do I have a second? Motion has been made in the second, is there any discussion regarding this article? Seeing none, Lori? Open the vote, please. Five seconds? Close the vote, please. Motion carries. Article ten, Holloway, a motion, please.
Is this working? Okay, sorry about that. I'd like to make a motion to advance Article thirty to be considered at this time.
So at this time, folks, we have a, a request to advance Article thirty to our next article, do I have a second? I'm sorry? We do have a second. So I can take a simple roll call, Lori, on this one? Article thirty, folks, is the article for... Okay. So we have a motion in the second, we're not going to do, we're going to go verbal. We're going to do a roll call. So we're just going to take a voice vote on this one, folks, so we do have a motion in the second to forward this article to the next article. All those in favor will signify by saying aye? All those opposed? Motion may have, motion carries, so we're going to go to Article thirty now, folks, do I have a motion for Article thirty?
Mr. Moderator, the Parks Recreation Department would, would like to withdraw this article at this time.
So what I need from someone is a motion to indefinitely postpone this article. I can't just remove the article, so if the motion is made to indefinitely postpone it, and it's seconded, we can take a vote from there.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to indefinitely postpone this article.
Do I have a second? Okay, so I have a motion in the second on the article, on Article thirty to definitely, to indefinitely, excuse me, postpone this. Now, if you could, Mrs. Ramsey, could you possibly put that in writing, if you have it in there, please, just so I have some for the record? So we do have a motion in the second to indefinitely postpone this. It's a majority vote, folks, I mean, the town clerk would have to type this in, would have to wait for it to type in. Are you comfortable with me just asking for a yes and a no vote, Lawrence, a majority? And let me declare it?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so that being said... I'll, I'll see if I can call it. With that being said, and no further discussion, we're voting on thirty to indefinitely remove this. I will call for a vote, all those in favor, signify by saying yes, aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Article ten, we're back at Article ten now, folks, so I'll wait a motion for Article ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of thirty-five thousand for the installation of in fluid, chlorine, amar, at the water, wastewater treatment plant.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second, is there any discussion regarding this article, folks? Yes, ma'am? It's, my belief is it's coming from free... Yes, yes, it is, it's, it's coming from free cash.
Because if, if the town, if the town has obligations to pay for the operations of the sewer department, the sewer department, not for the obligations.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
So those are all very valid points. The sewer department...
Hold on, so the question was, is the sewer department, my understanding was, is, the comment was made and the question was made, they were supposed to add tie-ins to the sewer to increase revenue, and, and, and people are asking the question, is the nerve tied in the sewer, they're not on sewer, why should be paying it? Maybe some of these features, that's basically it?
So those, those are all very, very valid points. So the fact of the matter is, is that unfortunately, for years, the sewer department never raised rates, never addressed it, addressed the capital needs, never looked at the regulations that were required by the DEP and the EPA, and unfortunately, it caught up to the town. And it caught up to the town in a very negative way, with fines, with regulations, with inspections that weren't, weren't passed. And we're finally now trying to address some of the capital needs, address some of the mandates from the DEP and the EPA, and the sewer department simply doesn't have all of the cash to support it. As you saw, just saw in their previous article, they used ninety thousand dollars of their... retained earnings to balance their books. It's not a great practice to do. Unfortunately, this has been going on for years, twenty years, and has now finally come to roost. So we're trying to address it, we're trying to fix it, and we're trying to move forward.
Yes, sir.
So those motions are not on the sewer line, have setbacks, but they failed, the rest of the town doesn't come and pay for our setbacks, it's failed. So in a case like this, people that aren't on the sewer, simply rely on pay for that, so the people that are on the sewer line pay that tax.
Can we hear that?
Very tough concept, very tough.
So, just from my own personal question as a resident in town, this is coming from free cash, so it's not gonna go against the tax rate next year, correct?
It's still our money.
No, it is, it is.
It will not go against the tax rate.
It is, but it's not going towards, it is coming from our money, our taxpayer money, yes, you're correct. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, through you, Mr. Administrator, how many fines and litigation are we spending due to this, this equipment not being here from the EPA, from the FED, and is it net positive, this is a question for the town, to be a reminder, we can see, is it net positive for us, and also for the hopes of the town, see, all of that for the next part?
Okay, so, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, Sleckman, did you get that question?
So, when we were going through this whole issue with the wastewater treatment plant, we were assessed by the EPA a seventy-five thousand dollar fine. That would come from the town funds. We negotiated with the EPA, and we did seventy-five hundred in an end to pay them in fines, which was much more affordable, but we also agreed that we were gonna fix the issues with the sewer department. The sewer department is a, it's a department of the town, and if they fail, it's not just them, it's the whole town that gets fined if they fail to be able to achieve what they're supposed to do. So that's why we're doing this, to make sure we don't get assessed fines, because, again, it's seven thousand dollars a day for fines with the EPA, so we're trying to avoid any of that. That's what this purpose of this is.
Do they give us a timeline to correct these issues? Do they have an emergency timeline for that? Or are they saying, by July first, we're gonna start turning on the setup?
Did we get a timeline?
So, yes, there is a timeline, there's a, there's a, an order to correct that has been issued by the regulatory agencies, and we have to meet certain benchmarks along the way, and some of those benchmarks are coming up right now.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anybody, yes, sir.
So is there gonna be a plan for sewer departments writing out the rest of residents to sign in?
Absolutely, I, I, I think that that's a great idea, I present, I...
I'm not asking you if you think it's gonna, I'm asking, is it already in work? That elements of how it was supposed to be for years.
Yeah, I, I brought that to the attention of the sewer commissioners, who are elected. I, I don't, I don't, I don't think so. So, you know, it is an elected board, and I have brought that to their attention.
Hey, yes, sir.
So who didn't do their jobs to handle this stuff, letting these commissioners, should they be...
So... So the question was, is, is, is being asked, who hasn't done their job to create this problem? You know, is it the commissioners, is it the town? Who's the blame for this problem, is, I think is what you're getting at, and you're looking for any answer for. One second, wait, yep. So, before I get to your point of order, let me just, Jim, did you want to respond? Point of order interrupts, go ahead, sir, go ahead.
My point of order is, could we please request the speakers to speak at a microphone so everyone can hear properly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Frer, you can respond to that question?
So the sewer commissioners is a three-member elected board by the residents of the town. Right, it's the whole town, it's voted by the town. Just, not just the users, but is elected by the town, the entire town.
Anyone else?
I mean, that's true.
Can you come down? So people can hear, sir? I'm sorry. Is she speaking? Okay.
Hi, Nancy Schultz-Warren, can you please let us know where the sewer commission is with regards to the omnibus budget? I can't find them in there to see how the town as a whole is paying for the sewer.
Yeah, it was an, it was an article, I believe it's Article... Article nine.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Am I down? No? She's not. Okay. If I can hear you back there, stand up and speak loud, or come down. Go for it. Hold one second, please. We're gonna have to come down, folks, 'cause I'm even having a hard time hearing you up here. Whatever happened to the students that we used to have?
I'm just wondering why they didn't submit an itemized reference for all of us instead of just a one lump sum amount of nine million dollars, or nine hundred thousand dollars, I mean.
So I think the question is, is she's wondering why the sewer department didn't submit an itemized budget to better break down their request?
Just like everybody else, all the other departments did. They all submitted itemized things so that we could see what was going on, and just not hear it read once.
So just to be clear, the Article nine, the nine hundred thousand dollars, comes from the fees that the users pay. That doesn't go on the tax rate. So, I have sewer, I pay part of this nine hundred thousand. Mr. Demetrius is not on sewer, right? You're not on sewer, he does not pay into this nine hundred thousand. Does that help? So if, if you want a breakdown, then the thing would be to go to the sewer department, and you can see... I mean, I have one here, but it's still about the same detail as you see, on the, so the salaries, debt service, purchase services, supplies. The best thing would be to go to a meeting and ask for this information.
Sir?
Right, so my question really wasn't answered, who is at fault? I know this, the commissioners are elected, but none, this was never, ever mentioned, like when the elections were coming up, that this problem was gonna happen, and that this, people haven't been doing their job, so it's like failure from top to bottom, and shouldn't this selectman have been aware of this sooner?
They're an elected board, and we have no control over them.
Sir?
I might be wrong, I might be unclear in my thought, my thinking on this, but is the sewer department an enterprise?
Yes.
And what does that mean?
That the, the...
It comes out of the users, right?
Yeah, the users pay for the system.
Then why isn't the enter, users paying for this fine? If it's an enterprise fund, it's not the town, then it's the enterprises' fund problem, and not the rest of the town's problem.
Right, I agree, but we were at...
So if there's not enough money in the fund, it's gotta be coming from the town.
And again, the problem has been decades of not raising rates, we want, you know, let's keep the rates low for every...
That's not the rest of our problem, raising rates on the enterprise fund.
I realize that.
Anyone else? Seeing none. We're gonna move to a vote, this is ten, Laurie, okay? ASAP. Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion is defeated. Article eleven, I'll await a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of twenty-five thousand for a copper reduction pump at the wastewater treatment plant.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none. Laurie, ASAP. Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. Article twelve, I'll await a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and four dollars and thirteen cents for the replacement of a scum pump at the wastewater treatment plant.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion in second, is there any discussion regarding this article? Yes, sir. If you can't come to the mic, stand up, speak loudly, please.
I have a problem with that. Can they clarify, what is the scum pump, and also, because of the next article on here, why the pump is so much on the ground, why that need replacing here?
Can you answer to what the, the scum pump? Is that right? Scum pump is?
If I remember correctly, from our budget meetings, the scum pump, the current, it was currently budgeted as a, as a warrant article way back when, and the scum pump parts, when it was originally quoted out, cost a lot more money. And now, that the pump has, has gone up in price, they have to make an adjustment for the pump and the cost.
Second part to the question was, the total of the three articles?
No, just between that, the second article here, it said we're gonna spend a million on the ground, but it's asking, so, for relate, relating the whole unit, and setting it in, if I have a...
So... So Article thirteen is a transfer, so there's about fifty-two thousand dollars that was originally budgeted for probably about eight years ago, that is insufficient in, in, in money nowadays to fix that, so we're gonna hopefully get the money in Article twelve to, to complete the project and fix it with the transfer in fifty-two, this is just a transfer.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
The part of the, the black from Article N, I think all of them.
Yes.
So like, moving from Article N, Article eleven, in Article twelve, I just said, and the part of the black, so we keep going with it, so we're having a...
Except for thirteen, yes. Anyone else? Seeing none. Laurie, ASAP. Yes, round twelve. Open the vote. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. Article thirteen, I'll await a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from sewer rebuild clarifier account originally voted at the annual town meeting on May eighth, two thousand twenty-seven, Article sixteen, the sum of fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-seven cents for the replacement of the scum pump at the wastewater treatment plant.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion in second, is there any discussion, folks? Yes, sir.
So, with the previous article, and this article, this should now be fixed?
So the question is, is the previous article and this article, this should be fixed? For Sleckman, or, yes?
Yes.
Yes. The answer is yes. Any other questions? Seeing none? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Article fourteen, I'll await a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of sixteen thousand dollars for the purchase of four sets of turnout gear, helmets, and boots for new members of the fire department.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion in second, is there any discussion regarding this article? Thank you, chief. Seeing none, Laurie, ready? Open the vote. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. Article fifteen, I'll await a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer for free cash to sum of fourteen thousand dollars to upgrade the exhaust removal system for all apparatus at the fire station.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion in second, is there any discussion? Hey, can you stand up, please, sir? Or, did you hear that?
The, the question was, which precinct, which station? This is gonna be from both stations, we currently have, the, the exhaust removal system is commonly referred to as a primal vent, removes all of the exhaust from the vehicles when they start. This would be upgrading from a pneumatic air-driven boot system to a magnetic boot system to come off the trucks.
Adam? Sixteen. No, you gave me two. That's sixteen. Right? That's okay. No, you gave me...
Oh, I gave you two.
You gave me, you gave me two. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Laurie, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Article sixteen, I'll await a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept master under law one-eleven M and one-eleven N for all town-appointed emergency medical technicians.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion in second, is there any discussion? Thank you, sir.
If anyone is curious, I can quickly explain. So, after reviewing things with our insurance company, it's come to the attention of many municipalities around here, that unless the town adopts this very specific mass general law, the EMTs are not covered, EMT-only positions are not covered the same way that the firefighter EMT positions are, it's a technicality within the law, there's no monetary, you know, stakeholdings here, this is strictly to make sure that our EMTs, if they are hurt on the same call that a firefighter or firefighter EMT are hurt on, on an accident, if someone hits them with a car, right now, the way it's written, they're covered at sixty percent workman's comp, when the firefighter EMTs are covered at one hundred percent IOD disability. This is to make sure the EMTs are covered the exact same way, so that going forward, they, they have that same coverage, which I think is very important for our staff to have.
Thank you. Anybody have a question? Seeing none. Seeing none, Laurie, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Article seventeen, I'll await a motion.
I move that the town vote to transfer for free cash...
I moved that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one-hundred and ten thousand dollars to replace hose and appliances for the fire.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding this article? Yes, ma'am.
So, this article will allow us to replace the hose themselves and appliances are the fixtures on the sides of the truck, the, what we commonly refer to as Y's, where the hoses tie into the fire truck. All of our stuff is aging. It's over twenty years old. We're starting to see, as we do annual hose testing, we're starting to see some of the hose sections fail and become, you know, become damaged. It's just one thing that we need to keep up on and replace. That being said, I just wanna say that we do have a grant article out there for the same exact amount through the Assistance to Firefighters program right now. If we were lucky enough and we get that grant, which we've done before, we just, we got a truck off that not long ago. If I receive good news in the next month or so, that money will be used instead of this money.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Laura, you set? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Article eighteen.
I moved that the town vote to transfer from capital stabilization the sum of fifty thousand dollars to establish a special stabilization account for the replacement of fire engine number two of, for the fire department.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. So, folks, at this time, I'm gonna ask town council, this used to be a two-thirds vote. It's now a simple majority by a law change in the state. I'm gonna ask Mr. Blake, our town attorney, to explain why this is now a simple majority instead of a two-thirds vote with a capitalization account.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you, Mr. Moderator, indulge me for a second. Thank you, everybody, for having me here. I can't believe it's been another year. I'm really starting to tick 'em off now. So, just so that you know, in the chapter seventy-seven of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, changed the quantum of vote for a special purpose stabilization fund from two-thirds to withdraw to a majority vote. So, the next couple of articles are special purpose stabilization funds. You will see another request to appropriate out of a general stabilization fund, which will be two-thirds. So the notation in the warrant was a mistake, but this is now a simple majority and will be until the legislature decides to change it back.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought the town had a twenty-five thousand dollar limit on what they could spread on any article.
Thank you. The town has a, has a bylaw that requires a secret ballot for anything over twenty-five thousand. So, if you recall, back in the day, and I'm old enough to remember this, we used to have ten or fifteen secret ballots, but now that we got this, everyone's a secret ballot.
Correct. So every vote is a secret ballot with the clickers. Anyone else? Chief?
Mr. Moderator, if I could just explain this article and the next article. These are capital stabilization projects that were approved by the Capital Planning Board. These are articles like we've done in the past where these are gonna be spread over a number of years to get the funding for these. This is working towards a goal, like this replacement and the next article coming on there. So, we try not to hit the taxpayers with a large lump sum if we do not have to. We like to plan that over several years, and that's what this article is for.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fire engine number two is a two thousand and one.
Adam. Mr. Moderator, real quick, looking at the numbers and thank you to the Capital Planning Committee for putting together this anticipated budget coming up. For anybody who didn't grab it, looking at FY twenty-six, there's an estimated one-point-two million dollar upcoming expenditure. I say we kinda beat that back a little bit. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to increase this article by the thirty-five thousand dollars that was defeated earlier in Article ten. I'd like to make the motion to increase this article by the thirty-five thousand dollars from the previous article.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Articles and past practice with the town of Warren, correct me if I'm wrong, town council, cannot be raised on the floor. They can only be lowered on these articles. So, I'm sorry? Yeah, our past practice, and I've been in town for twenty-five years, and I appreciate what you're attempting to do, we're not allowed to raise an article, an amount, something that's tied in with a dollar amount to it. We can lower, but not raise it. So I-
Understood.
So, when it comes to, sir, just real quickly for you, the ominous budget, when we go through that and I read those lines, just for everybody, we can raise and lower those, like a salary or something like that, but once you get to individual articles, they can't be raised on the floor. They can only be lowered. Okay? Anyone else? Seeing none. Okay. Laura, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Article nineteen, all the way to motion.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to transfer from capital stabilization the sum of forty thousand dollars to establish a special stabilization account for the replacement of structural turnout gear for members of the fire department.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second on the floor. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Seeing none.
I have a question. Article fourteen was for on sixteen thousand.
Hey. Can't hear you. Please.
Article fourteen, they asked for sixteen thousand, which passed. Now they're asking for another fourteen for the same thing? Forty, I mean, for the same thing?
So, the article before that was to purchase gear now for new members of the department. The article with the forty thousand is a capital stabilization account for years down the road to complete this project to replace all the firefighters' gear that expires in ten ye- It's five years into its useful life. It expires in ten years, so it's got five years left. The forty thousand dollars is the first installment to replace all the gear at one time. The fourteen thousand is to buy gear that firefighters need right now.
So you're not gonna ask for forty thousand dollars every year for this?
There's, this is part of a capital stabilization plan to get to the amount we would need to replace all the firefighters' gear once that useful life expires in five years. Minus, if we bought new gear, the four sets, they'll still be good for another five years after that. It's to replace the majority of the firefighters' gear.
Thank you, chief.
Yes.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Laura, you ready? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Article twenty, all the way to motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that it's printed in the warrant.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, I'm sorry.
As printed in the warrant.
Okay. Everybody follows along with that? It's printed in the warrant? With the revolving funds? Caught me off guard there, there. Mr. Chairman, you caught me off guard there. Are you gonna, you want me to read it? You want me to do it? You want me to read it? All right, I will go through it. Is everybody comfortable with reading it from the warrant, or would you like me to read the entire part? Yes, no? We're comfortable. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We're on Article twenty, as printed in the warrant. Moving in a second? Motion and a second. Any questions? Discussion? Nothing. Got you. Seeing none. Laura, you ready? Open the vote. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. Article twenty-one, all the way to motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to conduct a wage classification and compensation study on all its employees for the purpose of creating a new three-year wage compensation scale.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding this article?
When was the last time that this was done?
When was the last time that this was done? I'm just repeating yourself, so everybody hears.
When was the last time what was done?
Wage classification.
It's done every three years.
And is that three years ago?
Three years ago, but there wasn't a study done. This would be the first time a study has been done, you know, as far as I can know. But this is, it's done every three years as the new wage scale comes out.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a clarifying question. So, we're gonna pay who twenty-five thousand dollars to do the study?
So, more than likely, it will be done by the Collins Center at UMass, who's typically, has done these for communities across the Commonwealth. And there's also a possibility, just like we did with the fire chief article recently, is that there's a possibility of a state grant in the fall that I'm gonna be applying for. If we're fortunate enough to get the state grant, then we're not gonna use the town funds for this. We will, we'll use it for a grant. But this is anticipation that we don't get the grant, because grants are not guaranteed. If we don't get the grant, the study should be done because our wage scale is set to expire next fiscal year.
Is this a skill set that a town administrator should have? Should they be able to pull information and conduct a study?
I certainly can, but it's not, that's not a best practice. And the reason why I say that is because it should be done by a third party so that there's no bias towards any of these things. We're talking about people's wages and salaries, and it really needs to be studied by an independent body.
Okay, but we have a town administrator who could do this as part of their job. Instead, we're gonna pay an outside agency twenty-five thousand dollars to do it instead of using that to apply to the wages of the people who work in the town.
Yes.
Sir?
I did. I got a price for them. Yeah, I quote for them.
I just, I just wanna say, I started in two thousand and two, and there's been no study done on wages. It's, they just take that and it's been either a two, three percent every year, every year, every year. And a lot of the positions have changed in town, especially with all the new state regulations that now this is somebody's job that's gotta do this and that. So I think it's wise to have somebody outside do this so that they compare apples to apples. Warren is a poor community. We don't wanna be compared to Barry. We may have the same population, but we're a lot poor. So I think it should be done by somebody and compare us to the towns as close to us as possible.
Sir?
Hi, Ray Capaco. Yeah, I just wanna speak to the point of whether the town administrator should do it or not. He would certainly be capable of doing it, but I agree with what he's already said. You don't want his bias to be influencing the input to that study. He's the, what would you call yourself, Jim? It's, you're human resources. You're the chief of the employment in town, and it would just be inappropriate for him to do that study. And I just wanna second what Madeline just said. I hate to see the money get spent myself, but it's, it's the only really appropriate way to proceed with this kind of an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. As a resident, removing myself as a moderator, I have a question. Does this impact electants also, or is this just appointed positions, the study?
So, this, this particular quote was gonna affect everybody on the wage scale. If you're on the wage scale, that's, that's where it would be. So, electors would not be on-
So it doesn't impact elected?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
I think this is a little dangerous to have somebody from UMass doing this who never came to Warren, doesn't realize what kind, what kind of town we are. UMass did that mess downstream. Students made that practice decision down there. It's a mess. The one business in town pizza shop gave heart in front of it because they never came to Warren and looked at.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? Seeing none. Laura, you ready? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jim.
So I, I will give, give somebody some information about with regards to this. Westbrookfield just recently had this study done, and they also use the Collins Center at UMass. This is a typical, you know, department at UMass that handles these types of studies throughout many communities throughout the Commonwealth.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none at this time. Are you set, Laura? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. The motion carries. Article twenty-two, all the way to motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of twenty-five thousand into the OPEB fund, other post-employment benefits.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding this article? Seeing none. Laura, you all set? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. Article twenty-three, all the way to motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer free cash the sum of twenty-five thousand to continue to fund maintenance on the town level system for the purpose of keeping the town in compliance with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer mandates or take any action relative thereto.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding this article? Seeing none. Laura, you all set? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion passes. Article twenty-four, all the way to motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to fund ongoing maintenance and repairs to town buildings or take any other action relative thereto.
Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding this article? Yes, sir. Come down, please.
Hi, Jason Morgan, West Warren. Just a question, something like this. Why, just wanna know the mindset of why is this an article and not just part of the budget of departments?
Because we're using some, some free cash to fund this for, for, for capital needs, and we're trying to take it off away from the taxpayers so that they don't have to raise and appropriate it and that the taxpayers would be having to, you know, continually pay this. So these are some one-time improvements that we're using some free cash so that we don't have to put it on the tax rate.
Well, that's helpful. Thanks. My next question was, I think you answered it, but, so this isn't, this is a one-time projects, not to take away your typical maintenance for a given year?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Laura, you all set? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. The motion carries. Article twenty-five, all the way to motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $30,000 to fund updating, purchasing, and leasing new computers for town offices.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, is there any discussion regarding this article? Seeing none? Lori, you all set? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Article 26, I'll await a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $11,000 to replace the senior center basement bulkhead and rear exterior door.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none? Lori, you set? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Article 27, I'll await a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $30,000 for the purpose of creating a dry storage area to store highway equipment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, is there any discussion regarding this article? Seeing none? Lori? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. The motion carries. Article 28, I'll await a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept the following counts and to trust, the income of which is to be expended for the perpetual care maintenance of the burial lots at Pine Grove Cemetery, for certain individuals for the 1909 plan of said cemetery. Joseph and Diane Brasca, Section A, Lots 167 to 168, $600. Herbert Senior and Jean Kingston, Section F, Lot 39, $300. Christopher and Michelle McGrath, Section F, Lot 36, $300.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, is there any discussion? Thank you. Seeing none? Lori? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. Article 29, I'll await a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to authorize the treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements during fiscal year 2025, as permitted by General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, is there any discussion? Thank you. Seeing none? Lori? Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. From there, we're going to Article 31. I will await a... Sure.
I'd probably direct this to Town Council. Do we have the ability to make a motion to reconsider and amend an article?
Yes.
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 I would like to make a motion to amend and reconsider Article 13.
So, the motion's to reconsider first, correct? So, the motion is to reconsider first.
Understood.
We have to take a motion, have it seconded and approved, and voted on, and then if it's yes, and we're gonna reconsider, then you'll be able to amend that article.
Understood.
So, we currently have an article on the, we have an article to reconsider, Article 13, correct?
That's correct.
So, I have a motion to reconsider Article 13, do I have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion regarding this request? We're gonna do this, Lori, I'm gonna do just, I'm gonna do a voice vote. We're just gonna do a voice vote for, no, votes, voice vote, folks, majority rule, so there's no discussion, seeing none. This is a vote to reconsider Article 13. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And it was defeated. It was defeated, sir. So, we're gonna move back to, so now we are back on Article 31? Article 31, I'll await a motion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town adopt the following general bylaw for the position of town administrator as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Yes, I do, thank you very much. Is there any discussion regarding this article, this motion? 31, yes, we passed on 30. Seeing none? Lori? 31. Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. Article 32, I'll await a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to change the board of assessors from elected to appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion regarding this article? Yes, sir.
I think the people should still have a right, I think the people should still have a right to vote for their assessor, not for all things.
I mentioned he thinks that people should still have a right to vote for their assessors, for that position.
Yes.
Sir?
Mr. Moderator, through to the Town Council or to the Selectmen, is this the only way to make a change from an elected position in town is through a town meeting? And if so, I would like to see the Sewer Commission brought up from elected to, from elected to appointed on the next town ballot.
What, Mr. Blake answered the first one?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The, the way that this is done, and yes, this is the only way it's done, but this is a two-step process. You come here, from going from an elected board official, except for the Board of Selectmen, to an appointed, you have to get a majority vote at town meeting, and then at the next municipal election, there will be a ballot question, and there has, that has to pass at the ballot as well.
So, one more question, sir, is if I had a special town meeting, because usually there's another one in the middle of the winter, we could put it on that special town meeting, and then have it on the following town election?
That meaning the Sewer Commission?
That question of switching that position from an elected to, we could do that at another special town meeting. We could put that question at the town meeting, put that there on that, on that docket, and then at the following election, make the townwide vote? Is that what you're saying? I just wanted to confirm the process, since you're here, and we don't have to pay for a second consult.
The, the process is to go from elected to appointed, you have to have a town meeting vote, affirmative town meeting vote, and then it gets put on the next municipal ballot. If you were talking about the Sewer Commission, then yes, that's, that's how you have to do it. Now, it can be at a special, or it can be at an annual, but that, that's the process that has to be done.
What would the term be for this position? How long would this person...
Three, three years. So, the reason we're bringing this particular article forward is there's been a lot of churn in the assessor's office, and if people don't run, we don't have assessors. If we don't have assessors, we don't have income. I mean, that's kind of a short of it. And I'll say this, if, if you're upset about the sewer stuff, we need people to run on, for the board. If no one runs, then we don't have a board, or the same people stay on and on and on and on forever. If it were appointed, then what we would do, or any select board would do, is seek out people. We're looking for people to be on the sewer board, we're looking for people to be on the assessor board. And then we can vet people, it's not a popularity contest anymore, so I think it would, the system would work a little better. So that was our thought with, at least the assessors for the moment, and I think this brings up a great thing with the sewer board.
Yes, sir.
But can you do that now? I mean, if the position's not filled, you have the right to appoint somebody, you can still do it.
Yeah, but only for short, so they would fill out the term of the people who aren't on there.
Yeah, and then there'd be another election, and the people would get to vote again, and if the people don't, if they don't vote, you can still appoint somebody. But we still retain a right to vote.
It's kind of, yeah, I mean, sure.
I mean, you're, you're going on the assumption that nobody will ever run for that position?
Well, I mean, look at the sewer board, there's people...
We're not talking about the sewer board, we're talking about the assessors, we're talking about the assessors.
How, how many board positions now run on a post?
But they're still being run, and people are voting.
Yeah, but...
But, but, but you're, you're trying to say that you can make a better decision to put people in this position than the people themselves?
But nobody, if nobody runs, then nobody gets on.
Then you can still appoint somebody. If nobody runs, you can still appoint somebody.
Okay, I just, I think it just adds to the churn, so, yeah, I mean, it's true.
So, if I can just add this, like Mr. Blake stated, this, even if this passes this evening, it still has to go to a ballot question at our next election, correct? So it's not like it's gonna take effect now, it's still have another option for the voters to vote. So, the choice is yours, elected or appointed, I think the Selectmen made a valid point as to why, and the difficulties the town is having, filling positions right now and putting qualified individuals there. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, just a clarifying question about the appoint, if it were, if there were to move to appointed positions, would they be appointed for all three-year terms at once, or would there be a staggering of the placements?
Jeff, I think you might be better suited to that.
You, you'd have to stagger it, and those terms, it, it would be, they'd be appointed upon expiration of the current terms. And through you, Mr. Moderator, I, I do wanna give some clarification to the prior speaker when we were talking about the Sewer Commission. I wasn't really expecting to talk about the Sewer Commission tonight, but I do recall in the back of my mind now, that there may have been some special legislation that dealt with the Sewer Commission. So, if that is the case, the usual process from going from elected to appointed may be slightly different, depending upon what that act says, and if it, in fact, is an act.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Lori, you set? Yes. No. Yes, 32. Open the vote, please. Five seconds. Close the vote. The motion is defeated. That was close. Article 33, I'll await a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 33 as printed in the current warrant.
Okay, folks, sir. Any questions regarding Article 33, as printed? 33, Lori? Open the vote. Close the vote, please. Motion carries. And that concludes this evening, right? And that concludes the annual town meeting for...
Can we revisit Article...
Hold on, wait one second, folks. Hold on one second, folks.
Could we please revisit Article 10?
So, it's a motion to reconsider, to reconsider Article 10. So I have, before we convene, folks, and we close the meeting, we have a, a request to re, a motion to reconsider Article 10. Is there a second to reconsider Article 10?
Second.
So I have a motion in a second on the floor. So, we have to first vote on that before we go back to Article 10, so I'm gonna do this with a simple yea and nay. Okay, Lori? All those in favor of reconsidering Article 10? Yea?
Yea.
Opposed?
No.
So, the motion carries. So we're gonna go back to revisit Article 10, right now.
Could I, could I say something about that?
Just one second, hold on, let me get there. Go ahead.
The reasoning is, if we don't... If we don't authorize that money to be paid, the state's going to keep fining us, so let's just get this done with and start fresh.
So if you recall, folks, this was the motion with regards to the sewer, the article regards to the sewer, and the amount of...
Do you want me to reread them?
Thirty-five thousand.
Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead.
Can I make a motion to amend this article?
We have to take, well...
Are we voting to reconsider first?
We've, we voted to reconsider, we're in it to reconsider right now, so you wanna make a motion to amend it?
I do.
You can only amend it down, the amount. If you're amending the amount, you can't amend the amount up.
I'm not amending it up, I'm amending the content of the article. I make a motion to see if the town will loan $35,000 for the installation of an effluent chlorine alarm at the wastewater treatment plant, at a 6% interest rate over a term of three years, repaid by the Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Tell me, Paul.
Yeah, I think that is a spoken word, a question here, I don't know that because it, the funding source of the identified years was free cash.
That I was thinking too. So, I'm gonna have to rule that out of order because of the following reason, because the art, the motion is originally motioned to take the money from free cash, and there's a, an identified source of where that money would be coming from, I can't change the funding source on the floor here, we can't amend to borrow money like that, because it's already been identified in the original motion to take it from free cash, so the only...
We would have put it from free cash, we would take free cash and then repay it. We would get that money from free cash and then repay it over a term three years.
But it's still changing, it's...
They're gonna have us a loan.
I understand you're saying, it's like, they're adding, they want this money to be repaid to free cash. I still don't think we can do it.
Jeff, could be a summary motion here now, I'm worried about the scope. Whether or not somebody is sitting at home with record, they realize that this is gonna be free cash, but actually a loan. So, it's your call.
I think it is called for free cash or not. I'm not comfortable with the loan. So, as a moderator, I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure we legally can do that. I, I'm comfortable with the revisit and taking it from free cash, I don't know if we're gonna be put in the town in a predicament where we can't actually enforce that ability to pay it back, because of how it was worded in the original motion. So, in order to do this and reconsider this, it's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to come from free cash, because that's how it was originally identified, and I'm, just, it's just my calling, the Town Council agrees, I'm just a little cautious on this request to pay it back, if we legally can do that. I'm not sure we can go in that route. I'm comfortable with the free cash, if we were gonna revisit it, and take it out of free cash, but not the loan portion of it.
Is there a way to make, is there a way to get the funding source from the town?
I don't think we can write it in the end. It's a different warrant. I mean, it's, it's almost like we'd have to have another, another special at our next meeting, and identify it that way, because this warrant's been closed.
Is there a way of doing it, if we did it in another meeting, is there a way of doing that?
So I think the question, maybe, at the special, you could do it at the special, for an article to repay that money, and take a loan on the town's board. So you could approve it now, and take it from free cash, and at that next meeting, you could then put an article before the select board to put on the warrant, to want that money repaid. Or, if it didn't pass, it would just stay as is, where the money came out of free cash. But you would have the ability to do that, yes, at the next special. Hopefully that answers your questions. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, speaking as a member of both the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee, I'd like to reassure town that this was debated thoroughly. It, it's an unfortunate and difficult decision that I made, and with pun intended, I held my nose, but it's the right thing to do for the town. It's, we're, we're gonna get hit with much more than $35,000 worth of fines if we don't do this. I believe that the Sewer Commission has been... do this. I believe that the sewer commission has been negligent. I think it's, that's already been spoken to. They have not been, the sewer department has not been managed well. As town member, as residents in the town, you have the ability to speak and redress your government with grievances. And so I would encourage everyone to get involved. But for the good of the town, I think this article, I think it's important that we pass this art, this, this article.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Way in the back.
If we don't fund it, if we don't pass it, does that mean it's not funded at all?
So the, I think it is, yes, because it's been brought up to reconsider for the thirty-five thousand. If it's not passed at this vote, it's not going to be funded tonight.
Does the whole sewer department?
No. No. No, not the whole. Do you want to speak to that? It's, it's just this one article, this one thing. Not the whole sewer department. Okay? Yes.
Go ahead, Madeline. Madeline, go ahead. It's on. Madeline, go ahead. It's on.
Um, can, oh, wow. Sorry. Can you remind us what the, um, fine is per day if we don't make these changes?
Seven thousand?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand dollars a day.
That's what it was in the past.
It was that in the past, I remember.
They, their fines fluctuate, okay? They could hit us with a seven thousand dollar fine. It could be more. It depends on factors. If it was a corrected thing, and we said we were going to correct it, and we never did, then, and they gave us a break the first time, then they could come at us a little harder the next time, because we're not fixing what we agreed to do. So the EPA has a, a very, um, large scale of ways of fining the towns. When we first got hit with this, I, I was new to the select board, and it was brought to us, and they hit us with seventy-five thousand dollars. And the sewer commissioners could not pay that. And that's the only thing that got them to work with us and get things fixed in there. And that was because they didn't have a grade five wastewater operator, a licensed professional there. They have to have certain licenses, which nobody wants to do. Nobody wants to work at a sewer department anymore. So it's very hard to come across those people. And what, what the town pays in salaries, nobody would consider it. So we've been working with them, and they've been working with us to get these things fixed. It's just, there was so much over years that has been neglected. And believe me, it was massive task. And Mr. Farrar has been working closely with them, and we're just trying to do the right thing so the town can avoid these fines.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I don't, I even understand this. It's thirty-five thousand dollars for years and years. And I've lived here for years and years. The sewer department, all those jobs, they've been underpaid. They pay people at the Shepherd Building more than them. They expect people to work for nothing. Okay, so if you don't like the way the sewer department is run, runs, um, the board of commissioners, but don't not fund it for the town. It's awful. We paying twenty-five thousand dollars for a study the town administrator could do. But yet, we don't want to pay thirty-five thousand. That, nobody's paid these salaries. They're, they're not want to pay these guys a living wage. I, you know, I rest my case. Yeah, but, but the reason why, a lot of the reason with the sewer department, they never, they could never get help, decent help over the years, because they didn't want to pay. Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else?
We did raise salaries for them. That's how we were able to get them.
Yeah, but they haven't for years and years.
We did this scale the first time. We did raise the salaries for them.
Yeah, for years and years they have.
But it, yeah, for years it hasn't been.
Yes, and that was, that's been a big problem with the sewer department for years and years and years. That's what I'm saying. This has been before you lived in town.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Okay, folks, we're going to take a vote on article ten. It's an article, it's a, the motion to reconsider was, was approved, was, um, passed. So this is, I'm sorry? You got this one in, so we can take by clicker? Revote on number ten, yes. This would be to approve the thirty-five thousand dollars for the installation of the effluent chlorine alarm at the wastewater treatment plant.
For free cash.
From free cash, yes. Okay. Lori, you ready?
Are you, are you in touch?
This is the amendment to, we're revoting, we're, there's not a amendment, we're revoting that article. Originally, it was defeated. It's been reconsidered, approved to be reconsidered. Now we're revoting that article ten for the thirty-five thousand. Okay? Coming from free cash. No other questions? Open the vote, please. I'll give this one a little bit more time. Five seconds. Close the vote. Motion carries. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes a motion, a motion to dissolve. We need a motion to dissolve. Motion's been made, seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.